Let's call this meeting of the Board of Education to order at seven oh seven. If you would all rise with elected leaders.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Willet, are there any acknowledgements?
Not today, just to keep it in mind that I'll be posting to the dashboard and other places when the library is going to do it some evenings. It doesn't announce them all in advance. It does them month to month. That's why we'll have a schedule for all of them. But I'll announce it as they're coming up. And I think in our board agenda too, we were going to put them in here.
Under future.
Under future. So we'll be adding them there too, just as well.
Thank you. Any additions to the agenda? There are none. We'll entertain a motion for the approval of the October ninth minutes.
Hello?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? There are none. Jayden? Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
All right, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Public participation. The town, members of the Talon Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration for those of attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. If you would start with your name and address for the minutes. Online, raise your Zoom hand in the room. Feel free to raise your hand and you can be called upon. Going twice if you would like to sleep. Please make yourself known. Right. We will close public participation. Dr. Willet, it is the timer, I'm telling you. Correspondents?
Two emails came in concerning the athletic conference and supporters staying in the CCC. Is it?
Thank you, sir. Points of information. Would anybody from the board like to speak? All right. There are none student representatives. What's yours?
Okay, so starting off, Student Council has been doing a lot of planning, specifically a homecoming, which will be November second. The theme is Dressed to Impress. And we've also been planning Spirit Week and the pep rally.
And today, the Talon Business Pathways took a trip to Gillette Stadium. They learned a lot about the sports marketing that goes on there as well as getting a tour. And with DECA News, we are currently in our World Wildlife Fund fundraiser. It's being run by a very, very gifted student. It's not me this time, but I mean, you know, so good. And so not only did we do fundraising the past two weeks at the farmer's market, including the Harvest Festival. We're also fundraising at lunches with a carnival games theme. So we have Ski Ball, we have Brain Toss, and a bunch of other different mini-games. And so far, we've raised five hundred to six hundred dollars. And the fundraiser will be ending around next week. So more updates with that. And from the fifteenth to the seventeenth of November, we will be going on our DECA Power Trip. Very, very excited. I love Power Trip so much. We are very, very lucky to have a breakout room. Not a lot of chapters get a breakout room, so it's really important that Talon has a breakout room. We have a thirty-minute breakout room playing Decaland, which is a game that one of our students came up with. And last year, we had an attendance of about two hundred and fifty students. So we're hoping to keep that or expand that. And any questions or comments?
The, sorry, the seminar or the breakout room that you guys are hosting? It's the Decaland. What's the premise sort of? Is it like a networking sort of activity?
So it's, so we have kind of a tradition of bringing games and then transforming them into DECA. So this is a play of Candy Land. So it's basically just enhancing your basic knowledge. So we have different categories like marketing and finance and business administration. You know, you roll dice, you pick up a card, you have to answer a question, and then you move along the board.
Gotcha. Shoot up the corporate ladder. What's up? You shoot up the corporate ladder.
There you go.
There you go.
That shoots and ladders.
Oh, you're right.
That's what you're thinking of.
I was trying.
In Candy Land, everything had candy.
Any other questions?
Have one. That's awesome.
All right, we're gonna leave because once again, senior year. But by the next time we'll be meeting, both of us will be absolutely done with college admissions. So you'll be seeing a lot more of us. So, thank you very much.
It'll be after, it'll be, sorry, it'll be after the Power Trip, right? Because our next meeting, when's our next meeting?
Yeah. We'll both be done by November first, though. All right, I'm gonna guess.
All right. Committee and liaisons. Correct?
We, we just met before this and we started looking at course catalog and courses, electives that are currently being offered.
Negotiation?
Well, we met last week and see things wrong with a few of the clubs that we've been working on. The offerings won't be sending some of these out to students participating over the coming months. I'm just getting a feel who's gonna be doing what. We got the one set that we're doing and it's progressing. We've also updated the main Talon Public School page. Is that correct, Walt? Or is that the superintendent's page with the budget?
That's both, actually.
Okay. We moved a few things around. Right in the center, we have submitted budget question. Since no discrepancy come in this budget cycle on how to reach out to the Walt district or us or that's the update on that. And now we'll have PT and uptake.
I can do a really quick one.
Okay, generally like the final information on the PT.
I like the way you wrote it.
Just because a couple of these are good ones. The TIS Fall Book Fair begins next week. So it runs from Monday, the twenty-eighth to Friday, November first during school hours. So it'll be evening hours, open on Wednesday, October thirtieth from four to six P M. And students will be sent home with paper copy reminders this week. And the most important part, they need volunteers. So please check the top to Facebook page to sign up to volunteer. And then the other thing I had was that the Talon Education Foundation is hosting a movie night Friday, October twenty-fifth in the THS cafeteria. The doors open at six thirty and the movie begins at seven and they are showing Hotel Transylvania.
Okay. A question.
You mentioned that the committee has decided on the ones that we're gonna try to put. What are those?
Do you, do you recall, Walt had a list?
Yep, we have, you have the Games Club.
Yeah.
Dodgeball is extremely popular. They do already have a F R C language program, which is out there. So that'll be mostly what we were looking for there.
Those actually start tomorrow.
Yep, they're still recruiting for outdoor club. I'm not sure how many we will get for that, but we have a ton of Games Club kids. And and I think off the top of my head, that's what I'm thinking, but I could look it up.
We're allowed to still call it Dodgeball.
They still call Dodgeball, but it's not like in a circle like when we were young, which is Gladiator type Dodgeball. They have really soft balls and they line up now.
They're not the playground one.
They're not that hard, Robert.
It's not the, no matter where you turn, you get pegged. Well, you have a chance in this Dodgeball.
And at what level, sorry, at what level are those clubs?
All, all, the, the high school and the middle school have quite a few of their own clubs already in, but the language is that T I S and Birch Grove and then the Dodgeball.
It's like all three and four levels.
Yeah.
We'll be doing a version of it.
Dodgeball, I'm sure.
Maybe not B G B.
And the nature one was the Birch Grove too.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to provide some for the little kids.
What about the Games Club?
The Games, is that a bulk or is that?
It's T I S mostly. But they may have a chapter, T I S depends. But right now, it's T I S, a lot of T I S.
The only reason I ask is because I used to, I did Games Club, I think my first year at T I S. And so I didn't realize that it had gone. I didn't realize it had gone anywhere. And so bravo to you and the committee for putting that together. That was awesome. That was fun. So.
Some of the Games Club.
Really? Yeah. We totally may have to visit the Dodgeball. It's a T voting. Well, in the Dodgeball, I can see gaining popularity as the years go by.
They had that at, they had it in the school a few years ago, too.
Yeah. And they do the competitions, the tournaments and whatnot. No, I remember those days. But yeah, that, that's awesome.
I'll get two more things I wanted to add, more or less engendered for. I know I saw the Harvest Fest, the Talon Education Foundation, they are having a, they had a sign that they're having the Wizards come back in the spring. So.
That got me a lot of money.
I know.
Souvenirs.
And then the other thing was for T I S and Birch Grove, they're still looking for volunteers for the Mileage Club. The one keeps telling me I should sign up. And then I looked, like, both of my kids are at the same time. So it's right at like twelve oh five to twelve thirty-five. So I'll probably. And my phone sounds like, oh, when in there, no man. That by me? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Policy.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, perfect. Um, so I, we just went over, we had a meeting on the ninth. We went over policy forty sixty discrimination, sexual harassment in the workplace. Policy fifty seventy sex discrimination, sexual harassment. And then Title Nine. But it's all on, we're gonna be reviewing a couple of them on L one and L two today on the. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Negotiation?
Nothing new at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Do you want to hear from F F C? I forgot. F F C? So, yeah, the meeting, we also held that October ninth minutes. Definitely go look at those. They're available online. But as far as like highlights go, overall budget for this time of year, it looks good. You were there. Thank you for joining us. But so no concerns there. But there's a good discussion around the five-year financial projection. Typically, that's reported at the level services budget. So we got some commitment from Dr. Willet to kind of include in the superintendent's proposed budget what some of the impacts could be for strategic initiatives. So we talked a lot about like a full-time free K program. What that impact would be to budget short term to actually show, obviously, voters show the town like what the impact would be financially towards the beginning, but also long-term impact of reduction in early education, special education, stuff like that, strictly because like we're seeing, already seeing it right now with the burst like over at Birch Grove Primary that we're having some positive trending in the numbers with the recent law change, but having a full-time program like that. So more to come for sure, but we're gonna try to incorporate more of a real five-year plan of not strictly what level services look like, but also some of the strategic initiatives we're all trying to incorporate longer term. So all good news, but definitely go to the minutes.
Thank you. You may have me first next time.
That would be my turn.
All right. Thank you all. Chairperson's report. Since we absolutely have to have a quote from our reporter. I heard that, anyway. Former President Obama is quoted as saying, changes will not come if we wait for some other person or for some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. Nowhere is that more important than right here. Never is this more important than that. Last meeting, we heard an update on where our district stands in the eyes of accreditation and where we should aim. Tonight, we will hear information on another critically important facet in our district. As I listen to the committee reports, I hear what I feel in that quote. I see committees that are striving to look at what we have, where we need to be and how we put this district in the best place for our students and our staff. Maintain that momentum, keep that going. Make sure that each and everything we do, each and every meeting we have is focused on that drive. And making sure our district is exactly the district that we think it needs to be for our students, our staff. So I sincerely appreciate that. That's it. Sure. Superintendent's report. Dr. Willet, good news.
So one of the things that we had talked about was reporting on some of the grants and activities that are outside of just the typical stuff we get. Kind of giving you updates now and again on some of these other ones that we go for along the way. And, you know, we also talked about ways to increase that. So one of the things I wanted to do today is just give you a sense of oops. Okay, it's fine. I wanted to blow this up a little bit if I could. Let's see if it cooperates. There you go. So these are the standard grants that you'll see in the budget booklets. These are our federal grants. And then the next table below that is our state grants. But what you had asked about was, you know, beyond those kinds of things, month to month, what are some of the things that we do get and go for? And so I gave you an example of the most recent ones as I'm working through them and the staff works through them. And there's a process for reaching out and looking for grants. And then when we receive them, depending on the amount, you know, I can, I'll make you aware of them. But I will also try month to month in a report to the dashboard that I'm working on. One of the things that I will be reporting out on, you know, is going to be that these kinds of grants that are not the federal grants, not the state grants, not the standard grants that that we would go for, I would write for, you know, to get from the state, but some of these other smaller ones that add up to a lot and are still very much appreciated. So one of them here is the Talon Alice Enrichment Partnership Grant. Five thousand was granted from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving in United Way of Central and Northeastern Connecticut. And this provides support for families who are struggling to pay for clubs and activities. This is really great. It's a wonderful program. You may have noticed that we were working in partnership with them last year as well. Put that information on the newsletter and then people apply through the newsletter. And if you look at the superintendent's, one of the things at the top, Kate Valo is a community member who's basically the brainchild of the whole thing and helps, helps get everything, you know, to happen. And I worked with her. And so in this case, we've been able to give out thousands and thousands of dollars to Talon families to help them afford different clubs, activities and sports and students' needs. So if you do and if, you know, click on this link, if you're able to do that, you're following along. There is an application form that anyone can fill out. And once it's filled out, we process it very rapidly to help get these individuals the money and the help they're looking for. Alice is a different standard than say free and reduced lunch. So you don't have to be on free and reduced lunch to get Alice's support. You can see the income thresholds here on the submission form. So for example, two adults with two children in daycare, you can make a hundred and two thousand two fifty-two. If you fall below that, you still can apply for one of these grants or some of these cards for assistance. So it's, it's not as restrictive as a F R L because a lot of families are right on the cusp of, you know, still needing a lot of help, even if they do have more than the F R L or free and reduced lunch thresholds would provide. So this is a way of helping Talon families. That's an example of one of the grants that we're doing. Another one is the Talon Education Foundation Grant for Frameworks of Bicycle Repair. You know, that was a grant that Mr. Carpenter submitting to T E F. And it essentially supplies bikes and tools and equipment as part of the engineering and tech curriculum to add to that. So kids will be able to rebuild their bikes, not motorcycles, but you know, the street bikes that are pedals, bi-pedal locomotion or what do you call it, pedaling. So it's, it's not battery-powered ones either, although it could be, I suppose. But it's an excellent addition to our tech programming. And, and so that's one that is being pursued. And then a grant that is also being pursued right now is Social Media Edutainment Grant, a presentation grant. There's a lot of negative impact right now with respect to social media and kids misinterpreting each other and hate posting and putting up digital footprints that are harmful to young adults and children as they move into the future. They may not realize how harmful they can be. And so this program is meant to help kids reflect and make better decisions with respect to technology. And it's a grant for about five thousand nine hundred dollars that we're seeking right now as well. So the Alice Grant is, is already achieved and you can see the program already in force and happening. These other two, I think T F is, if they haven't already, probably will be supporting the Frameworks Bicycle Repair Program. And potential social media grant, we're not quite sure yet. But these are three that are in the pipeline. One is already achieved, one is well on its way to being achieved. And the third one is is one that we're looking at and hoping to acquire. These would probably all be acquired within a thirty-day period. The Alice is already acquired. The other two probably would be acquired within a thirty-day period. So there are things like this happening all the time. And so this is an example, if the question came up, you know, other than these big ones, what are some of these others? And this would be an example of some of the others that pop up in a month's time.
Thank you, Dr. Willet. Questions?
That submission form, is that also going directly to you? Or does that go to?
It does go to me. I help them manage the logistics. That's, we work in partnership. That's why the Talon Public Schools are part of it. We manage the receiving of the data and the, and the working with the organizations and Kate Valo to then approve it. And then we process it and we send cards or make the cards available in our office. So we actually, you know, we do a lot of the logistics to help make it happen and it helps a lot of Talon families.
That's the definition of the acronym E S S E R.
S R is, that is the federal grant and some of the federal grants with respect to the COVID era. Give me a minute and I can look up.
Like an SLExia Grant, Recover Activities Grant.
Yep, these are besters and S R's are mostly, they are from the COVID period of time and they're sunsetting. Which is why you see a lot of them kind of going out to zero out after a while. Art besters and things like that.
Yeah, it's because of our best, yeah, four forty-five to zero.
Yeah, they're, they're, we had a, when COVID came, there were a ton of grants that went along with COVID and then those all started drying up.
So what is it?
The Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, a collection of federal dollars that was created by Congress in twenty twenty to help schools and state education departments address the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. That's all I had, the question I had. Thanks.
Any others?
I have one. So Dr. Willet, when we get this, these grants, such as the, the one you mentioned, the Alice one that we already have, how does that money get tracked? Does it go into its own line item or?
Yeah, we, in the case of Alice, these are provided to me as cards. Visa cards.
Okay.
That are loaded. And then they're tracked through the partnership with the Hartford Foundation and United Way. So we track every card. The card gets distributed and coded and then we track it. So X number of cards go in, X number of cards are distributed, X number of cards tracked. And then at the end, we do an audit of how many, you know, what happened to the whole of them.
And the actual dollar.
We can actually see what was spent.
The dollar still going to our account.
They never, no, those dollars don't enter our accounts. And in the case of say like the bikes, that stuff would be purchased and we would receive it or go into S A for purchasing, but it doesn't hit the operating.
Any others? All right. Thank you, Dr. Willet. Moving on, new business, policy forty sixty.
So these are updates essentially to bring the district into the most recent compliance with the most recent federal changes to Title Nine. There are so many elements to Title Nine that have to be updated that this is basically an overlay. Whenever Shipman and Goodwin gives us the new Title Nine stuff, we just put Talon's name on it and publish it. The last revision was September twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. This one came out in the summer. This last summer in July. And so everybody needed to update. And then we wait for Shipman's models. And once we received Shipman's models, we updated. So if you look on your agenda, you can click on this to see the current policy, but if, then you want to see the proposed policy, it's here in blue. This is going to be what replaces the current. And then if you want to see Shipman and Goodwin's strikeouts, and there are many. It provides you a, and then the regulation, which the board doesn't go to the regulation, the regulation is more implementation of policy and it just has more of the yeah, it's more of the weeds, it's more of the glossary terms and all that. When you go all the way to the bottom or you can click at the top here on the on the strikeout, you know, jump right to it. These are the strikeout differences between the prior version of their model policy, which is generally what we follow, and the newest one. So if you're interested in roughly what changed, you can go to the strikeout and you can see what the Shipman and Goodwin's strikeout actually looks like. So in a situation like this, we're not really updating our, some policies are strictly ours. We might change a few sentences here and there. We might update a few things here and there. This is one where sweeping parts of it get updated. And so Shipman puts out this main, you know, this big model overlay and then we just take it. With that, you can see what they changed roughly by looking at their striker.
Thank you. Mr. Dr.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at this, the forty sixty personnel. So it looked like the one that was approved was in February of oh three. And then nineteen years went by and then it was revised. And then all of a sudden, we're revising it again in three short years. Is there a reason why we have this short timeframe of revisement for this?
Title Nine is driven by the federal government mostly. And it's very much driven by presidential administrations sometimes.
Okay.
And so, you know, to give you the, my best shot at that, the Obama administration changed significantly what had existed before it. And then there was a change with the Trump administration and then there was a change with the Biden administration. But there were more recent changes to this than there have been in many, many, many years.
Okay.
And that, that cycled around a lot of things.
That's what.
LGBT, you know, things like that.
Thank you.
Being in policy for like ten months now, I probably should know this, but like procedurally, does anything change at like for basically like when we make large changes to these policies, like for staff, teachers, et cetera, for larger issue like this, like what, what kind of impacts trickles down, like?
Yeah, most, the most succinct way to describe the impact would be that it is now easier and there are more things that apply. So it's, it's far easier to to request and attain a Title Nine investigation. It is now possible to launch one for even more reasons than it was before. And what they did do is they allowed the investigator to also be the determiner because there used to be more roles than there are now. They kind of merged the investigator into the decision maker. So you can investigate and make a determination. And if they don't like it, then they appeal it to the appeal person, which is, which is me. Unless it's about me, in which case you guys would be the appeal person. But the bottom line is it made it, it made it possible to apply to more things. And then they made the investigation roles, decision-making roles as, as well.
That one, just for clarification, Dr. Willet. Understood you saying that essentially the laws changed, which means Shipman and Goodwin revised their model. And what we have now. And what we have now is essentially swapping to their the new model as opposed to the older model. After the second read, assuming that the policy is accepted with minimal changes. This will put our policy in line with the laws.
With the federal government's newest take on town mind, yeah. Yeah, and and any recent legal changes, but it's usually federal governments shift and administrations shift.
Cause I know we've had, we've had previous conversations on the importance on making sure that our policies align with what the state, the government's saying. We we have to do, so I want to make sure this this will check that box. Any other comments? Dan, I'm sorry, did you have anything you wanted to add as committee chair?
We thoroughly went through this in policy, there's a lot of legalities that that shipment had to. Cycled through and do that to make sure that we were up to par in the in the legality role, so. A lot of this, the conversation that we had was making sure. That talent public schools is where we where we need to be in the legal aspect of these of this policy specifically as well as the other one, so. That's all I have to add.
Thank you. Questions, no other comments, questions, alright, this is first read, correct, Dr. Will?
Right.
Alright, then moving on to policy fifty seventy.
Essentially the same thing, it applies to students. One is for staff, one is for students. So it's a Title Nine overlay, same thing, same. Same everything, just slightly different statutes and things like that, because it's applying to students and you'll still see that. Shipman uses some statutes that are ubiquitous to both, so even though they say employment, they also apply to everything. So fifty-seven is the student version, forty-sixty is the staff and same, you know, same general structure and the strikeouts are at the back.
Dan, anything to add there?
I have nothing else to add to that, thank you.
Alright, there are no other questions, Dr. Willitt, thank you. And L three, hybrid Board of Education meeting.
So I was asked to review. Current hybrid model and also report out on whether or not you could choose other models. So this narrative is essentially. The result of that giving you the foundation of. You know, where the authority comes and under what authority that you have these meetings and so on, the shortest version of this is that you can choose to do what you want to do. The only thing you have to do is if a board member wants to be virtual, you have to allow that board member to be virtual. But otherwise, there is no requirement of you by state law or by the order, by any talent ordinance. You're going to video it, we have to post and project the video, if you want it to go one way broadcast, you can go one way broadcast. If a if a if a board member though wants to come in virtually, we must make the board member accommodated for that. But you don't have to do it or any other. That's the short version, I'm just giving you the super succinct version of what this is basically saying.
Before I open up for for questions on that, let me just clarify, I'm the one that ask. What I was looking for here is just making sure we knew what our options. Not saying that there's any intention or any direction to go one way or the other, but if you recall, for a period when COVID hit. We were told we had to do this. We went in, we got the necessary equipment, we put in the necessary policies and we opened that up. There have been occasions where the technology hasn't been operating correctly or our attendance or. Our location wasn't correct and as we're scrambling to figure out where we can meet. The requirements that were dictating where we could meet centered around smoking type of conversations. So the direction that I asked Dr. Willitt to investigate and to bring to this team was to look into that, you know, if we had to make other choices. And what does the state say we have to do, what's the laws and what does Shipman say we have to do? With that being said, let me open up a question.
So I have a recollection of last. Budget cycle to where we had a snow event throughout the district. And then we ended up, you had mentioned that we had to cancel the meeting. We were scrambling around trying to get people together to have another meeting. Because the district was closed, yet we're still able to go on hybrid. Is that something that, I don't know how that all would play, but my view, I feel that if we're. You know, still be able to have like a hybrid meeting or just an at-home Zoom meeting. And it's so important, especially with time with the council and everything else regarding the budgetary numbers that. We should be able to possibly have that meeting hybrid, but I don't know if that's another policy, I really don't recall, so. I might be butchering what I'm trying to say, but I don't know if that pertains to this or not.
Well, the um, it's 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 convoluted, so I apologize, you know, for that. Hybrid is when public interacts with you. You can have video and you can have a meeting that you project that does not have public participation. From people that are virtual. So you could still do what you, you know, we could still have a meeting like that, it's just you're projecting that out and you're not having an interaction with public. Hybrid is when you are interacting with the public. So there's a, think of it this way, there's broadcast where you're broadcasting that out, like you're doing, you know, you used to do years ago, there used to be. Person with a camera here, you broadcast it in one direction, people from home watching couldn't publicly participate. You know, public participation, unless they were here physically, they couldn't do it. So you can have a meeting like in a snowstorm that has no public participation that is ejected out and there's no back and forth.
But I thought there was something in one of the policies where I recall Sony had mentioned. That if the district is closed, that we can't have a Board of Ed meeting.
Well, that's how it used to be when you were in a building and it was going to create a danger to try to prepare the building for you or, you know, people would have to come in to do that. Then you could, then came the age of being able to do this, people became proficient during COVID of attending meetings. Virtually, which you still can do, you just have to broadcast it. The only thing that you do have to do is when you're broadcasting any meeting like that. Someone does not have the technology to do it, you are theoretically supposed to provide a place for them to view that. Because someone, let's say somebody's struggling for resources and can't afford a computer, you have to have a place for them to go to view it.
So let me ask on that, I'm sorry to interrupt, that's part of it. So in that case, and I know there's a difference with secrecy, secrets. Do we have to, if the meeting is deemed not to be interactive, we decide to have the board and it goes out. Recognizing that we have to provide that opportunity or that resource for a member of the public to view that, it doesn't have to be in real public. Yes, okay.
And if it were due to a major snowstorm, that would make that risk. Somebody on your staff has to provide that, so it's still, it's not as risky as it used to be and that everybody, you know, had to show up during the snowstorm or whatever. That's what you're going to do, but there's still a risk to it now because we. I'd have to go in or something and make it possible for someone to come there, even though they probably wanted to, it was a bad storm.
So second question, what is the turnaround time here, so if we decided, you know, between having. Interaction or non or non interaction, that's up to words there. I'm thinking that that has to be in the agenda that gets posted.
You just, you it would be as simple as changing the agenda.
Also, it's the twenty-four hour.
Just like when you, if you had an agenda that had no public participation. You just have to make the agenda say there's. So you can make it broadcast, you you, basically what I discovered is it's up to you entirely. There's no town ordinance, there's no rule from the town side, there's no state requirement. Where this all came from was in the implementer bill when they, you know, originally came out during COVID and everything that allowed for hybrid meetings and gave some expanded language on that. But there's actually no state requirement and no no local requirement for you to do this any any particular way with respect to whether it's broadcast. Or a hybrid.
I guess the two things that come to mind is that, one, I do think that we should be aligned with what the town council provides. So they were going to continue that, I would think that we will want to as well. And secondly, I just have concerns, I mean, the whole point of technology, right, is to advance and. It really gives, you know, the timing of our meetings at seven o'clock at night, it really allows us to get a lot of. Community participation at certain meetings or certain subjects and the concern for me would be doing anything that would limit. The public to be able to to weigh and then give us their feedback and think if we. If we cut that piece and didn't, and only allow them to give feedback if they came in person, would be limiting the amount of people that could um and do that.
Agreed, Jen, I think, and I don't know numbers, but I got to imagine that. Once we went to the hybrid model, we've had more public participation, public involvement than prior. And I would be concerned that we would be eliminating some of that. Some of the informed citizens that we have would be less informed. About the ongoings of their government.
So on the other hand. You know, everything they said, I think, well, it's also in the first Board of Ed goal, engaging in transparent, get a blah blah blah, whatever he said, so. I just think that allows, that allows for obvious transparency between anybody who's sitting in those chairs, technically who's sitting behind the camera. And us, so completely on board with transparency, that's all.
Do we know what an advantage and disadvantage of it is? I mean, for those of you that have been here longer, maybe since before they had the hybrid, you know, is there? Have you noticed anything different or?
I do, that doesn't really matter.
Well, but your opinion matters and and giving us information matters.
The major difference is that, you you know, what I was doing before. We ran the meeting today, didn't used to have to happen, I just showed up and there was a person with a camera there and they just brought you us. Now we have the owl and wires and this and that and all this other stuff, that's the major difference, but. You know, it does everything that you said it does, it does allow people access things like that, so.
And and just to be clear, I completely understand and agree with what you're saying, Bill, and all things being equal, my preference as well. Whatever we can do to get what we're doing in here and to get the message out, totally I'm one with. My purpose in this one is just making sure we do what we could do. If pushing the, pushing the shove, if the owl broke, if, I don't know. What do we have to do by law and what can we then adjust to?
Interesting question, though, if the owl did break.
You have three other hours.
Oh, okay, well, that I did not know.
Three hours, this camera, you know.
I didn't realize there were three of you.
Thanks, Tony, for bringing this up.
Any other questions? Dr. Will, uh, thank you. Would would Dana, can policy committee make sure that our policy reflects the options?
Yes, well, yes, absolutely, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll make sure that we have it all and that reflects the conversation that's moving and adjustments.
That might be an excellent thing to put into the policy tracker that is on the Board of Ed dashboard, then we can add it to all the agenda. Great way to keep track, it's been a little plug in.
That was absolutely not scripted. Alright, right, thank you. Excuse me, moving on, then we have no old business. We have no board action, public participation. Comments must be limited to items on this agenda, again, if you are in the room, please make yourself known. Online, please raise your Zoom hand. Hearing none. We're going to move into public participation. Yep, one of those days, now we're moving on to then executive session or entertain the motion to enter executive session. With inviting our town council members as well.
A motion to move us into executive session inviting town town council membership. And Dr. Will.
I'll second that, but if you have a question.
Discussion, thank you.
Does this just releases case, is this a good time? Could we move this after future business or is that going to take thirty seconds and we don't have to worry about moving it till after future business?
I don't think future business is anything that we need to actually say, those things on future businesses are just there for.
Or points of, sorry, points of information, future business, how how long could that really take? Is that something we do now, like we do almost every meeting or do we just? What going now, again, it's just for the sake of, Billy, you you made the motion, would you like to withdraw that motion?
Sure, I'll withdraw the motion. Hey, it's a good question, thank you, let's go ahead and get points of information.
Not to complicate it, not to complicate it, but for, again, now we have to have at least this information thing to say. Keep that I motion that we, well, no, but.
We don't need the motion, alright, there we go.
Points of information.
Points of information, I got enough.
Would anybody from the board like?
Baseball season going alright?
So far, so good, we'll find out Saturday.
Thanks, graduation is June.
And graduation is juicy, important information she can get.
Thank you, that has been set.
Very nice, what about the eighth grade, I saw the dates, never mind, I don't want to, what's the date for that day, great.
Yeah, eighth grade, right now, we're still thinking about that because there is some feeling that people may not want to come out on a Friday. Which would normally be, it would normally be the day before graduation, but that would be a Friday in this case, and so. Nice, I, we're just exploring, seeing how many people, what they feel about the Friday.
Any others? Alright. Would you like to say anything about futures before?
I would like to put in a plug for instructional rounds, instructional rounds is occurring October twenty eighth. You will find the sign up on the B O E dashboard, it is, it's programming, it's actually really fantastic. I think it's also going to be our our programming that's. You know, music, art, it's beyond just fine arts, it's broadly all of the arts, so. College and career readiness type things too, it's going to be a fantastic instructional round. It's a great way for board members to get in and see what's going on inside the school. I think many of you have done it, will say it's very, it's worth doing.
That's Monday.
Alright, now I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. Inviting our town council members and Dr. Will.
Motion to go into executive session inviting town council members and Dr. Will.
Just a friendly reminder to those who are logging on virtually that you are going to be put into the. Zoom purgatory waiting room area.
Discussion. Anybody else? Alright. Jayden, bye. Brian, hi. Dan, hi. Bill, hi. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Dana?